You have one hour and that's all the time we're giving you. I think she's right. All of the workshops that we've had in the past have been citizen participation. And nothing that's been published says, by the way, you're just gonna be decorations.
Well, if you, since I know you attend other meetings.
Yes.
You've also seen that those meetings have not been like this, that's why.
Okay.
So, you're a great example, because I've seen you at other meetings and other council meetings and Commissioners Court.
Thank you.
But, now, but keep in mind now, tomorrow, as well as even this time today, this is not, tomorrow's not the first public hearing. There've been a series of public hearings on the budget. And at each meeting, if I recall, there's been opportunity for residents input in four, five, or six meetings that we've had. I know you sat in, I think, on the last one, and again, we, we listened to you, so I just want the record to be clear. Tomorrow is not the only one that we've had for understandable, as a resident. I get concerned about that myself. I pay taxes. So, yeah, we've had them. Yes, Ms. Anderson?
My only, my only comment is, I speak for the Anderson family that lives here and pays taxes. We pay taxes on everything. We support the police department. We get, we need the safety of neighborhood and young children running around the streets where I live. And I think all these important departments are more important than some of the other parts here.
Point well taken, or was there any?
I just want to say one more thing, ma'am.
Last one since we talked.
In the county commissioners meetings that I go to, anytime during that agenda, if you raise your hand, Trey Duhon will recognize you. And we have had some heated meetings in there. So, I know for a fact, I have been to the council meeting in Walla, on him state, but in county commissioners court, they do allow citizens to give input, five minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and anytime during the meeting, if you raise your hand, he'll acknowledge you.
And, and all the ones that I've seen and watched online, not one time have I seen people in the audience arguing with the commissioners.
Oh, they do. They can really.
I'm saying what I've seen, and when I looked this up, again, we're trying to follow the process, whether it's with the budget and the resident input. I just want our meetings to no longer be the worst meetings in the county. That's, then again, that's a part of my job, so I looked it up, and we will be enforcing that, but just like right now, we entertain and residents in a workshop meeting are allowed to speak, but it's when it's brought up, put on motion, and allowed. But also, again, this has been a much more orderly meeting, and that's how we want to do it. Okay, I think my time is up on that.
Five fifteen start tomorrow.
No, I think I saw five. They changed it.
Five fifteen.
It's, it's five fifteen.
Oh, it's five fifteen tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, five fifteen. I misread. Yes, back to council.
So, as we continue to go through the budget, I just want to make sure, you know, because of, again, we have never, we have never, in the budget, what we're, the clarity we're trying to get for the police department, we have never reduced or, or went less than the budget they've had before, and I don't think anything we're proposing is less than what they had last year, just for the residents who's, uh, was talking about the police department. We're not proposing to do anything less than what they had last year.
Any other, we're done with the, uh, the times up?
We have, okay, fifteen minutes.
Do we have been in charge of merging another situation that is?
Is it regarding the budget, ma'am?
Yeah, it's with the.
Okay, now, hold on, and, and I'm just gonna qualify, since I know myself and Councilman Rowland participated, other than yes or no. Uh, we'll just extend that. If it'd be okay with council?
I move to give the citizen three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Has been probably ruled in second that the citizen get three minutes to express their concerns. All in favor? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, we're addressing everything about police department. I would like to know where were the, uh, what happened to the police department? On September fourth, I was injured in a car accident with other people at the store down the highway. No policeman even arrived at the scene at that time. I was trapped in a car, car totaled out, and nothing, I asked for the police report repeatedly, and nothing wasn't provided. Right now, I'm still without my transportation due to, due to the dearest Comte car accident. And nothing hasn't even taken place. We can't, even lawyers are having difficulty to even to get the police report.
That's September fourth, ma'am?
September the fourth.
What was the address of the accident?
Uh, that is right at the annex red light approaching the campus area by the A and M R.
Okay, owns the University Drive?
Yes, sir. And it was where I was brought into the hospital faster than what a police department could even get there. And we do need something to be done about it. We're being faced with too many accidents on the campus, and it's almost going like a hush-hush on it.
Okay, well, if, if you would, if you would get with Officer Ross and just make sure we have your name so we can follow up, and, uh, and then go from there, and make sure you get whatever it is that the police department report wise. Is anything else on that? We'll make sure you, you get what you're supposed to have.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to hear that. Hopefully your concerns are addressed.
Yes. Okay, back to council budget and Mr. Johnson.
Okay, uh, that was an additional new item that was handed to you, page ten. That was just handed to you, and that's, again, in the police department. Uh, before today, we, we didn't have any equipment, new equipment requests from any, any departments, but the police department just gave this to me, and this is the request on there. Uh, a computer server, it's, it's been brought to my attention that the current server does not, uh, meet all the needs of, not only the city, but primarily the police department, with a lot of, uh, new compliances and, uh, security requirements that they're subject to, and so the server needs to be really changed out at a cost of about eighteen thousand dollars. And with that, also, there's a need for broadband radios, uh, six thousand, uh, new ticket writers of four thousand, and, uh. Pardon me?
Did that say six?
What's mean?
Ticket writers.
Um, uh, let's see. Do you have a number? I'm not sure the number of ticket writers, but, uh, again, they gave me the total cost. Go ahead.
Jay.
Yeah.
Didn't we just buy some new ticket writers?
But, well, with the additional officers.
So, you need more?
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly.
Do you know how many more and how many do we have?
Well, right now, I just have the actual dollars.
All right, so Monday?
Go ahead.
Uh, Officer Ross, Monday, could we get, uh, how many?
It's one.
So, we're gonna need one.
So, if I was putting in, we'd destroy any share.
So, it's four thousand? And then how many currently have?
Two.
Thank you.
We have, well, we have the charging bank to put six in there, so this is just so we can just add one annually. And the associated, uh, programming.
How many do you need?
Uh, it'd be nice to have four.
Uh, Jay Jay, could we work out, given, uh?
Well, right now, I'm working with these numbers right here. This is additional, uh, budget item, which, this total is thirty-two nine. Currently, I have left in the, in my contingency, uh, twenty-nine seven.
Hold, hold, hold on, let me, let me ask you a question. Is police not funded from general fund, or is all their money coming from the district board?
Police department primarily is funded from, uh, our, our revenue sources. If you look at the first page, go, look at page one.
Not just.
I know, I'm gonna show you how it's funded. You look at page one, look under transfers on page one. We shift out of the total funds that come into general administration, we're gonna shift eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollars over to the police department.
Okay, so my question is.
Go ahead.
Why can we not ship eight, ten thousand more?
Well, what I'm telling you right now is where that's coming from, the line item that it's gonna come from, is what we have in the contingency. On expenditures.
Can we not put more from general admin in contingency? Yes or no?
No, no. The way, the way it works, ma'am, is, the, excuse me, I'm tired. The way it works, understand the way this works. All your revenue, you see, look at, look at page one. All your revenue comes into general fund. All your sales taxes, it all comes in there, okay? So, I'm showing all your revenue, two million, two oh seven there, and then, so you have excess in general administration of nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, if you look at that fund. What we do is, we, of that excess, then we help fund police department and municipal court. Eight hundred and forty-three thousand goes to police department, seventy-six thousand goes to municipal court.
Didn't, didn't you last week share with us that, uh, a councilman requested to set aside two hundred thousand dollars to buy land?
But that's on the debt service.
I, I, I just asked the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know who requested it, but I know I.
Well, who requested it?
Councilor.
Councilman Rowland?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Requested it to be in the budget, or a request that, in the conversation that are about properties already bought?
Yeah, I added it in the budget.
So, we have two hundred thousand dollars that we have.
No, it's not two hundred thousand dollars.
How much is it?
It's, it's the amount of the.
Payments on two hundred?
On the payments, right.
Okay, so if we don't have a two hundred thousand dollar loan that we don't have right now.
Let me tell you.
We can get, no, here's, here's, here's my question.
Thirty thousand.
Okay, but here's my question.
Right.
If we have, and we're hearing from residents about their safety.
Mm-hmm.
We're hearing from the police department that they need two, as Councilman Jones confirmed, instead of one. All I'm saying is, with all this other stuff that we're doing, another eight or ten thousand dollars is not gonna kill us, even if you slice a little bit off a few other things.
That's on top of the thirty-two nine. Uh, the thirty-two nine is not included in this, which means this, this sheet that he just gave, was sheet number ten, is, is a new cost. So, the two hundred thousand we were talking about from the police, that's not even included in it. So, he has, he has, what, what I'm assuming he's bringing to us, is that we've had, now, he had to go find money for the thirty-two nine, and he made it balance. You're, everyone's saying, let's add an additional ten to the police department, so he has to go back and find additional, but he just found thirty-two nine for the, the police department, which, which is a crease this number again.
Point well taken. On Monday's agenda, I placed three or four properties that the city owns that has literally been costing us money, it's been non-tax revenue, it's been costing us to maintain it, I've cut some of it a few times myself, along with directing our public works guys to do it. That will be well in excess of the forty thousand dollars we need to take care of our police department. So, if we're talking about finding money, we, we can find a few dollars.
I have the money.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, while we're on the budget, and we've heard from the public, and those of us that live here, some legitimate concern, if our police department needs something, even Councilman Rowland has acquiesced, that council has always tried to give the police what they need. If we're looking at forty, forty-five thousand dollars, you got thirty or thirty-something thousand of it in land that we don't even know we want to acquire yet. But we can get that money and much more with the sale of these numerous properties throughout the city.
Can I address that? Currently, what I have, was gonna propose to you guys, we're looking at an additional thirty-two nine. I can go, if you go to page four, under continuous expenses, I have left, we have, not I, the city has left, twenty-nine seven. My proposal is to move that twenty-nine seven toward that thirty-two nine. That leaves you a difference of less than two thousand dollars, which we can, you can get additional revenue under municipal court to cover that, because with that equipment, uh, traffic administration is approved, and that'll take care of it. Now, I personally would suggest to you from my financial background, that you do not put in this budget, a potential sale. Might not take place. And again, I, I, I reference to you that in the budget process, special revenue, you stake a certificate. Because if it does take place, then you have that, but if it doesn't, you never wanna run the risk of overspending versus.
Have, have we totally allocated the additional four hundred, forty-one thousand dollars over last year?
Everything is allocated in this budget right here. That's why we're able to do what we're doing.
So, some of that allocation, we should be able to get ten percent of it.
What I'm trying to tell you, ma'am, is that page one is a complete allocation of that four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. It's included in the total five thousand, five million, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars for your total budget. It's included in there.
Well, one, I just know, one of the things that residents have been looking for is increased improvements in our police department.
And we can make that happen. I just told you how to fund this thirty-two nine, based on what we got here, and I, if that's okay with you guys, I will make that additional change to, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
For the thirty-two nine, for the additional.
Pardon me?
For the thirty-two nine.
For the thirty-two nine, yes. I, I mean, again, this is what, what, part of it, again, is that.
What I could've done, said, what's the radar?
The what?
I see the, the last item is the radar.
Uh, those are the units that detect how fast somebody's going, and that gives us a readout.
I'll be there.
Uh, I think we, what was the number on that one?
Forty-nine, that's just one.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, that was just the one, that was the one, uh, get that one. The tenth will be to get.
Do you have the police radios? How many was that?
Police radio?
It was six thousand. How much, how many police radios was that?
Uh, depending on what the price is and which units we get, that was gonna get us at least another four, four, I'm trying to stretch it to six.
So, I need, uh, that'd be four. And Jay Jay, you are talking, sorry, right, you got some big parts. I, I moved it with you.
Well, no, no, well, before we do. Yeah, but, but before we do now, 'cause I gotta make these adjustments, what I, the adjustment here is to take twenty-nine seven out of this contingency, and that's gonna cover this thirty-two nine, and we will increase, uh, revenue from municipal court for the roughly two thousand dollar difference.
Take twenty-nine seven out of the, the.
Yeah, you have twenty-nine seven on page four.
Okay.
That's why I can get twenty-nine seven, and I can get the difference out of, uh, by increasing, uh, municipal court revenue. And that'll make it budget, that'll make it balance, if that's okay with you guys. And that's what we'll do there. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, before you make that motion, just one, one point of clarification. That accident that she referred to as in September fourth was September fourth last year.
Oh, God.
So, that was, that, that didn't happen on my watch.
Can we get, I don't know.
I will be helping. I have her number, and she has mine, and she has my personal.
For a possible police report even after twelve months?
I, I'll reschedule and get her down the road.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll have those numbers.
We haven't talked about public works, which is the.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I don't.
How about taking a break?
Yeah, I need a little.
Need to take a break, but I would say that, like, yeah, that's what, that was all I was gonna say, that we, I mean, we've massaged out a lot of those parts.
Okay, but the one thing in public, yeah.
Let's go to public work, and this will be the last, I keep this at fifteen minutes.
Well, what happened to the mother?
Possible, I didn't have.
You have the floor, you have to have a photo back. Go ahead.
Okay, in public works, I need.
Page you on?
Uh, page fifteen. It'll be fifteen and sixteen. I need you all to decide on which direction we're gonna go. You got two columns there. Column one is proposed budget. That's, uh, staying with basically, uh, not, not going with the proposed, the USW column. You got, you go either way. You have a proposal from USW to shift the entire, uh, public works operation under USW. That's their column. The, uh, column just says proposed budget. That's not going that direction, but staying similar by not, in other words, that's not moving your total, utility department under USW, and, but we've discussed it, so y'all need to decide on which one y'all wanna go with for the budget concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Councilor. So, I, I see, so thank you, Mr. Johnson. You did, um, give us the things that we asked for, reference to public work, so we can see the different options, so, so I appreciate this. We discussed having, but one of the issues is we still may be short some people. Are we, are we gonna be, so right here, I have seven people, when you look at the total, um, with the assistant. Now, the, the pub, the USW proposal had like nine people, and so, we are, we added a, is this Eric person currently working in? So, who, so this just, should this be blank, or is this name correct?
That's what we're looking through, yeah.
Eric, Eric is a worker.
Oh, wait a minute.
No, Eric is.
No, Eric is, Eric is gone. He's. And so, who, who has it, so this, that means for operating, on page seventeen, the new pages.
Okay.
Now, so that means this is open.
No, so, I think there's someone to this part, because we have two new guys in public work.
We do. He's gone, um, Daryl, Daryl Bogus?
Daryl Bogus, Detective Landis.
Yeah, Daryl Bogus, a former employee, was rehired to replace him. Okay, and then what about, um, so that's only one?
And then we got a part-time.
Do you have a page, you got a part-time on there?
I have, they has, don't have a name. So, this person was hired?
No, 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 no. That, that, that's the person that adds to equal what, uh, remember, there's one person that's in administration.
Right, part-time.
That's not on his.
Well, we had, so this is the issue. The issue is USW had, we, they identified the two people who work on the inside, which is Ms. Lit, Ms. Durham and Ms. Cortez. That's identified here. They had one person working full-time, one person working half-time. Then they had six additional people working in the field, and I, I'm trying to address to see if, have we totally addressed those issues? Because it was a six, it was six in the field and two working, one working half-time, one working part-time. The person you just, um, put on, up here was Mr. Bogus. Did we hire someone who can, who has the subsequent licenses to help us do what we need to do, because we don't need any more grass-cutting people? One of the issues with, with the, the plan that Bureau, that USW gave to us is they had people who were able to do the lines, and we had, we are a little heavy right now with the one, two, three, four people, hopefully, out of the four, they have the op license to be able to put in water lines, because we have too many people who just doing everything else that can't really do the things that make us money, which was one of the reasons why USW was trying to take over our public works, and so I, we were wanting to do, the point of this conversation was to set up a plan that mirrored what they were charging us to do, where we can control the cost and reduce how much they was gonna cost us, but to, to try to see if we got this, if we got this, it didn't have to be the same amount of people, but if we just kinda, again, got back our own, hired a director, hired the people who, who had the licenses to do X, Y, and Z, and we just hired somebody, I don't know, does this person we just hired have the license to be able to do what we need? We don't need more, more grasscutters. Let me, let me pick up on what you said. Once we reach the point, see, what, what you have to look at is USW is either, because we need to license people, but if we have and hired the licensed people, then that's duplicative. So, right now, um, as Mr. Johnson and I talked about, and he delineated out the separate line with USW, it's gonna be either or, not both. If we have a director with all those licenses, because the licensed people don't go in the hole, they oversee the people going to hole, and right now, USW's serving that capacity, but if we get those people ourselves, that's that director-type position that, uh, that we had years ago, and then you won't need them, because that person has licenses. So, it's either or, not both. It's not a combination.
Oh, but see, when we, when we started this dialogue and conversation, we wanted to be able to have our public works, like, to give a public works directive, and as well as keep our staff, but have USW overseeing us. I know that's, 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 that's what we asked as a council, so there, there's no way to make that.
No, because see, look at the seventy thousand on page seventeen. That director is that licensed person, one of the individuals that Councilman Rowland speaks of, that USW says they're bringing in, is a director with those licenses. See, so if we hire a director, we won't need that scope of it.
But they had the two, which is, and you're right, but they had two people, and, and I, and I wanna just be very clear. I am saying that we continue the contract with USW for the basic service to help us document, part of our issue with TCEQ and all the stuff, we didn't have the documentation piece, which is a, a licensing and a skillset that is higher than everyone we have in the office. That's why we wanna keep USW, but we bring in a director who would then start to facilitate and take on some of the roles, and after a year in our next budget cycle, we shouldn't u- use USW, but for USW to be in that current capacity, it's gonna cost us like forty-two thousand dollars versus the, the, what they're trying to get us to do, which is blow our budget. And so, we're saying that, once we bring on a director, and then we have to look at these hires of the four outside people we currently have. We need to, we need, not only, we need a director who has the license, but we need an additional person. They don't have to have a B, or a A, or a C. They can have a D, but we need someone with a subsequent license that we're training and moving to be able to take this over for the next year. We are planning this year for how we move over public works for next year, if we wanna keep this in-house, which keeps us our budget down and allows us to be able to move forward, and, and that's why I'm saying that this new hire, which, again, I'm just hearing, I'm, maybe it just happened. I'm just saying, hopefully, this person has the, the licenses to move us forward, because we have too many, we have too many people who are laborers who don't have a subsequent licenses to do everything we need to do.
Uh, Mr. Glover was in school, right?
He's finished. He's, um, this upcoming month, he should be taking, getting his, um, taking his licensing test.
Okay, now, 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 let's keep in mind, um, again, we got the budget, and we got the actual work being done. When we're doing extensions, taps, water sewer line repairs, which is constant, that takes two people out of the equation, minimum. Sometimes it takes three. And when one of our folks go on vacation, have an illness, a sickness, which has happened to them or family members, now, the city's work is, is, is stagnant. So, when you start taking a look at what is actually being done, I think the budget should be geared toward the work, not the numbers. The director, USW, or, uh, us if we decide to hire one, and by the way, correct me if I'm wrong, council has not given direction and voted to post and hire a director of public works.
That's correct.
Okay, so, right now, that's not even on the table. So, what, what we are hiring is, this was a replacement, and because of, again, family sicknesses and, and things that naturally happen, and the work in the city, the additional personnel, they're moving and those things are getting done. You know, we can say we don't need another grass cutter, but when you drive around the city, I beg to differ with you, a couple Thursdays ago, I was that grass cutter. But it needs to be done, and the residents' requests are on that, because the city has all of the easement responsibility, not the ordinance. But the city, we got a lot of streets, we're, we're required to keep maintained as a city.
I agree, but is our, my, my only, my, and, and you're absolutely correct, but I am saying that one of the reasons with TCEQ and some of the other things with USW, our current staff cannot do a water line tap and a sewer, do that stuff. Is that correct? And so, because they don't have the license.
No, that's not correct.
That is not correct, so.
They have to be overseen. Mr. Byron, Huey, or Corey Bostick is that quote-unquote director person with all of the requisite license. They can do the work, they've been doing the work.
Right.
But what we found was, they were supposed to have someone, as you say, overseeing it. So, USW came on to fulfill that capacity, along with, as you say, the requisite paperwork and documentation. The two individuals that, that you mentioned, going from seven to nine under USW's contract, as I recall, don't, totally hold me to it. One of them was this licensed, uh, director person, and the other was someone who did the required TCEQ type, checking the water towers and things on weekends and stuff like that. So, that's who those two people were, in addition to, like you said, what was here. We had seven, they had nine. That, that was those two nine services.
How are we going to wrap that? So, I'm, I'm saying is, do we have a contingent on bringing another person in? Or who's gonna take on the responsibility, because we have, we, we have an agreement with TCEQ and USW right now on some issues. And we're saying that we need to get our records, some stuff handled with our records. We wanna. We wanna bring in a director, how are they gonna be able to do that and oversee lines? And we don't wanna get back in the same situation. So my only question is, where do we have in here a contingent to hire an additional person who has the subsequent licenses, whether it be the bottom, it don't have to be a director position, but a bottom line tech can be in the field to make, or, or can reverse us or, you know? Because again, like you said, if we, if we only have one person who has the licenses, they have to supervise. But if they have other things going on, how is that gonna happen?
Okay, let, let me address that. On page fifteen, we do have in here, you see, contract USW Group, forty-two thousand dollars. And that's to cover what they are doing currently.
Yep.
All right, if, if we move totally away from them, then that goes away. And that, that becomes available to you. If you, if we maintain some practical agreement with them to cover just what you were referencing, then that's how it will be paid for. Now, the other thing, one of the other strategies that's in this budget, when you reference the qualifications of our employees, we've already sent Darrell, I'm correct, to get his certification. That is a strategy that's in this budget, that we, our current staff, we get uh at least two of them qualified to fit those qua, they have to fit those qualifications.
And there's been discussions with them and.
Again.
Mr. Bogus.
If they don't, then we have to come back and look at it. You might have to replace one to get someone who can, 'cause we don't, like you just said, we don't need.
So that, that is the strategy?
That's part of the strategy, that's right, that has to work.
Moving on that side, what was.
Yeah, that, that's the strategy right there.
Okay, any, anything else, public works, council?
I don't think we have to solve the.
The what?
Do we solve with, how?
I mean, we would, I mean, a part, part of it is, maybe you feel, so he's saying, so we had two options we had. Are we going to keep it in-house, that's the one decision that he made, or are we gonna go with USW a hundred percent? Again, based upon, I, I would lean for us to, to keep everything in-house, keep our department solid, but give the supports we need for public works. Keep the, I would recommend us keeping the current contract with USW. But we come together strategically for them to identify, if they're working with TCEQ, that our director mirror paperwork and things they're doing. So once they leave after a year or two, that we can then pick up, making sure that we have everything in place of moving forth subsequently. Now, the question I have is, in, within, this was outside, outside laborers. Inside, do we have the adequate staff or people with one and a half people to do what needs to be done?
Well, we, we're working towards it.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, one of, one of the things we're looking at and with USW, we're gonna have to switch it over to their billing system. Uh and we're looking at either that one, which we can't get without them or a subsequent one, because our billing system is just not working. A combination of the meter reading is.